I call to order the Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting for January the 8th, 2018, and I recognize the invocation will be myself, and for the pledge of allegiance will be Commissioner Jeff Peel, and I'll say the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for all the opportunities that you've given to us, for all the good things that you do for Alexander County. Pray especially protect our employees, our citizens. Pray special protection over our emergency services, EMS, EMT, Fire Department, first responders, our Police Department, Sheriff, Highway Patrol, as they protect us each day. Be with us during this meeting. It would make wise decisions. It would move Alexander County forward. Thank you once again for the day and for all that you do. Give us a safe journey back to our homes, and we'll give you all the praise and honor for it. Amen.
If there's wishing, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do have some special recognition today, and for EMS, Mr. Charlie Dale Killian. I know you more by Dale. Appreciate what he's done in his service. And I'll just read some things here that's already been printed out for me. Since Mr. Charlie Dale Killian started working for Alexander County EMS part-time in 1983, went full-time a little over a year later in 1984. In his career, he has seen EMS change tremendously over those years with such things as increase of medication and procedures performed, standing orders, and the equipment used. Not only has Dale put in over 30 years with Alexander County EMS, he's also helped educate young minds as an instructor for a local community college. This is include many present and former employees for the Alexander County EMS and surrounding county EMS services. He's also helped as an evaluator for skills testing for North Carolina Office of Emergency Medical Services. Dale has served in many roles at Alexander County EMS to include paramedic up to interim director throughout his career. He resides in Aridale County with his wife Cassie Killian, stepson Zach, and daughter Candace. In his time off, Dale likes to spend time with his family, camping, and watching his daughter Candace play softball. And those are good things. And Mr. Killian, if you'll come on up to the podium, we got something here to present.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that it has been an honor to serve the citizens of Alexander County for just a few weeks shy of 35 years, and it's been an adventure. I have, as you said, I've seen a lot of change. We were basic EMT whenever I first started, and I guess I have the pleasure of being the last full-time of the original paramedics. Tim Juning's here tonight, longtime friend, and Tim's still part-time. He was out of that original group. But it has been a great journey. I've been blessed. I'm thankful to have a lot of family members, friends, and coworkers here tonight, and I thank them for coming and being with me. A lot of folks, there are a lot of folks that started this journey with me that are no longer with us, but I know a lot of them are looking down tonight and very happy. And most of all, I gotta thank God for keeping me safe for all these years. Bradley Erps here tonight, thank him for coming. Bradley and I both are lucky that we're here. So, but I do, I thank God for bringing me through this journey, and like I said, it's been a pleasure, and I thank the county for letting me work for them all these years. Thank you.
(applause) The Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the Killians, to Charlie Dale Killian, for 35 years of dedicated service with Alexander County EMS, presented in January the 8th, 2018. And we do appreciate your service.
Thank you, sir.
Take the seat, go, but if there's anything going on, that's a good thing.
I hate to give it up, but it's, like I said, it's been a journey.
We do appreciate it. I'm sure you're willing to call your family up and EMS guys that are here for this occasion.
(inaudible)
One, two, three. Okay. And one with the name. There's lots to do.
Okay, thank you. It's pretty great to feel it. (inaudible) 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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, we'd like to switch item number four and three just for the sake of time. That will move the schools up to number three, and the broadband will go to number four. I'd consider a motion to accept the agenda in a second.
So moved, and the alteration as you presented.
Second. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the agenda as stated, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our next thing will be public comment, and I'll just read the public comment policy we have. Public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It is not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. Time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Select one spokesperson to represent a group. Comments are be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and comments. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials and will be scheduled for further agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting and have their name placed on the list. I think we have Mr. Glenn Mays has signed up for the Friends of the Library Discount Program. If you'll come forward, sir, to the podium. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, Ms. Darnes, and ladies and gentlemen, I'm Glenn Mays, President of the Alexander Friends of the Library, and I thank you for allowing me the time to provide some valuable information regarding the Friends of the Library membership. Friends of the Library is an advocate for the library and the community by supporting programs that promote literacy. When I was a student at Ellendale Elementary School, and that of course has been just a few years ago, there was a message on the wall of the library, and in great big block letters, it said, "If you can read, you can learn anything." Excuse me. The Friends of the Library carry forward that message. Some programs that we've supported include the Summer Reading Program and other youth programs, working closely with the Children's Library and Ms. Mel. An annual scholarship, we present that to graduating high school senior. Alexander Radio Theater is another project that we support. Let's Talk About It is another. The Authors Lecture Series, Read to Me Program in cooperation with Partnership for Children in which volunteers read monthly to three- and four-year-olds in 18 child development centers in the county. And we also have a book sale, annual book sale. It's not only a fundraiser, but also an opportunity for folks to purchase books inexpensively. Now I thank you, county, for allowing us a venue for that sale. Those are just a few of the things that Friends of the Library does. Our members work hard to support these programs, but we need more members. This year, a Friends of the Library membership has become much more valuable than in the past as some area, several area merchants have agreed to provide a discount to Friends members. Among those merchants participating are Mays Meats, McClendon's Restaurant, Klein's Floris, Short Cuts, Adams Funeral Home, People's Drug, and Town and Country Drug. And by the way, this promotes your shop local initiative. These merchants have enthusiastically endorsed this program, which will assist the Friends of the Library in carrying out programs mentioned earlier, and also any others that we may add in the future. The Friends of the Library members also have early shopping privileges at our annual book sale. Membership is quite reasonable. We have plenty of membership forms, and we hope that everyone here and those watching or listening will consider seriously becoming a member of the Friends of the Library. This applies both to the Taylorsville and Bethlehem Friends Organizations. Our membership chairman is Kathy Riddle, who is here tonight, and she can assist with that, and we are excited about the possibilities that this membership enhancement affords. Thank you very much for allowing me the time to share this information, and we'll be happy to accept your membership. I have forms for you, as a matter of fact, and anyone else who would like to become a member of the Friends of the Library, so I'll have these for you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Good information.
Kathy has some extra ones, too.
Okay. Don't want to run out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will be moving to item number two, which is a public hearing for Conditional Use Permit 17-1. Greg Kazai and John Pilkington, you'll come up. Appreciate it.
Yeah, before I speak, I'll need to be sworn in.
And also, anyone who plans to speak during the public hearing will need to come up to the podium to be sworn in, so I guess we need to open up our public hearing. I entertain the motion to go into public hearing for conditional use.
I make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else planning to speak? Like I said, if the public is, you know, we need to be, you know, come to the podium and be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm or swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth to the best of your knowledge? If so, answer "I do."
I do, too. Thank you. Thanks, Ian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the Board. Tonight, you have before you Conditional Use Permit 17-1 for a group multifamily development that's submitted by Mr. Greg Kazai, doing business as Ashley Brook Property Group. The owner of this property is Lynn Carlton. Mr. Kazai is under contract with Ms. Carlton to purchase this property upon completion of this conditional use permit. The project is located on NC Highway 127 North, which is Highway 127 North, and the property is due south of the Mexico Viejo Restaurant. The project area is approximately nine acres. The existing land use of the property is vacant. It's Mr. Kazai's intent to construct a multifamily development of approximately 110 to 115 units on the property in a phased development. The first units will be constructed on the southern portion of the property adjoining Highway 127. I believe there's a site plan. Thank you, Chad.
What I was saying...
You have on your computer screen, and you should have one in your packet. The first two buildings for the public's input, you can see the laser pointer. This building here will be a, on the lower level facing Highway 127, will be commercial use. The upper building, the upper floors, which will be accessed from the rear, will be residential uses apartments. And then this building here, which is due south of that one, will be residential apartments as well. The footprint of the buildings themselves are approximately 8,400 square feet. The current zoning of the property that will be the mixed use is highway business, or highway commercial, excuse me, and then this property is zoned RA-15, which is residential agricultural and allows multifamily development. The applicant applied for this conditional use permit under Section 154.186, multifamily residential plan developments of the zoning ordinance. I believe you have that attached in your agenda. Letters were sent by first-class mail. The sign was posted on the property, and it was advertised in the Taylorsville Times. The Planning and Zoning Commission met on December the 7th, 2017, and recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions. The project must be constructed using the materials shown on the sheet that's labeled "Construction Materials," which you have that in your packet. NCDOT must approve the driveway access from Highway 127, which I believe that Mr. Kazai has obtained. Landscaping should be installed along the street, landscaping should be installed along the street yard facing Highway 127 of the mixed-use building, which would be, the street yard is the area between the road and the parking lot, so this would be for the building that is mixed use, that's highway commercial on the lower level, and then apartments on the upper two floors, and that the remainder of the project be developed in accordance with the submitted landscape plan, which you can see here, and you also have in your packet. It's not as easy to read on the screen, but it shows the required landscaping, that the required landscaping has been met in accordance with the ordinance and should be completed once the project is built out. The fifth recommendation is that Mr. Kazai consider constructing a sidewalk along Highway 127 the entire length of the property, which would be from the access point here due south. Obviously, with the potential widening of Highway 127, there may be some impact there, so that's something he would need to clear up with NCDOT, and it's something that, when discussing it with the Planning Commission, they agreed that we could look at some other options if it didn't seem like it was a feasible thing to do, to install the sidewalk. Of course, that was Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. Their recommendation was unanimous, and that was also staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions? Everything sounds good.
Yeah. Mr. Kazai submitted everything in accordance with what was required, so there were no issues. It meets the density requirements. 110 to 115 units sounds like a lot, but this is not a one-time project. It'll be phased. I think he's hoping to get started with construction in 2018 on the first phase of it. But based on what he submitted and what he intends to do, it's a good project for the area, and it's actually a very good use of the property. There's some topography issues as far as how it could be developed, so I think what he's proposing to do will be an asset to the area. And with the potential widening coming through there, he'll be able to work out a lot of things, and I think DOT will work out things, too, with how that would impact the widening and how it may impact his development as well.
Okay. Yeah, from the schematics and the things you give us, you know, the building looked like it would be, you know, really fit to the area and be a good-looking design.
Yeah, if you're familiar with, and I hate to say this, I've been in Alexander County, but if you go across the river into Hickory, there's a development beside the Walgreens on 127. I can't think of the name.
29 North.
Yeah, 29 North is the apartment complex. The apartments will have that appearance to them.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
I think it's a great project. It'd be a big asset.
Yeah, and like I say, with the widening of the road, yeah, that's gonna, you know, make in and out easier after it's completed, so, but good information. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other question? If not, we need a motion to close the... Need to close. Does, do you want, see what's...
I'm listening. Wants to talk?
Yeah. Okay. All right. I entertain the motion in a second to close the public's.
So moved.
Second. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, I guess we need to vote on the conditional use. Okay, I entertain the motion to approve the conditional use Kazai, or permit 17-1 Kazai. You entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for Mr. Kazai, based upon... Say this next, please. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Next page.
Yes, next.
We'll get it in the next.
It's the next page. Yeah, I got it. Based upon the, the project is within the scope of development in the... What? I'm making a photo of myself. That's first.
(inaudible)
Make that motion based on the project being constructed using material shown on the sheet labeled "Construction Materials," that the project is, the NCDOT would approve the driveway access to NC 127, that landscaping to be installed along the street of the mixed-use project be as it is shown on the documents, that the remainder of the project be developed in accordance with the submitted landscaping plan, and that a sidewalk would be considered and constructed along Highway 127 for the entire length of the property, consideration given for the possible impacts of the widening of Highway 127 by the NCDOT.
All right. Have a motion. Here's a second.
Second.
All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
All right.
Yeah. And moving on to item number three, which will be the Alexander's County Schools Budget Presentation. Budget Committee members Scott Bowman, Board Chair, Harry Strum, Board Vice Chair, and Karen Brickske, Board Member, whoever's here. Thank you.
Chairman Reese, Vice Chairman Leo, Members of the Board, Mr. French, and Ms. Darnes, I come to you tonight to make you aware of our current budget situation and ask for additional help for the 17-18 school year. If you will, the first slide, please. This is our budget breakdown for the 17-18 school year. And state fund, basically is self-explanatory. That's monies that come to us through, from the state. The general expense fund, which we refer to as Fund II, are monies that you provide to us, plus, that also includes fines and forfeitures. Federal fund is self-explanatory. That's federal funds, except for federal funds that are in the form of a grant. Those grant monies come to us as local funds, and part of that reasoning is now that we deal with money being allocated back to charter schools, then we have to break those out separately. Capital outlay fund, Fund IV, that, of course, capital outlay is material goods such as buildings, and a lot of that money this year is covering our one-to-one initiative, which I'm sure you're familiar with, with our computers for each of our students. Child nutrition, that's self-explanatory. That's our lunchroom program, food cost and monies back in. Childcare, same way, and then, and then local fund. Remember that the local fund also, that those monies are monies that are flowing through that fund that come in, such as ROTC, Head Start, EC, Medicaid reimbursements, Activity Bus monies. Those are monies that are just basically flowing through that fund. Okay. Next slide. This shows just a very simple breakdown of what you see as our, what we pay out based on salaries and benefits. You can see that at 84%, that's by far the largest portion of our payouts, and then purchase services, supplies and materials, and the capital outlay. And if you'll notice that our capital outlay is a meager 1%, which still with a budget of our size, that's still a lot of money, but still, it's just 1%. And that's one of the very frustrating things to me as, is that, you know, our lottery monies are basically capital outlay monies, and we don't, we don't have huge capital outlay expenses. And so, you know, that money sits there, we can't use it for other things. It has to be for the capital outlay. And of course, partially, our half-cent sales tax is in that also, but there's much more leniency in the half-cent sales tax. But, next slide, please, let's go on. But if you'll notice here, salaries and benefits, and then the other expenses, think about what a huge portion of that money is actually spent back in Alexander County. That's, I mean, it's, has a huge impact on the economy of Alexander County. Next slide. And here's the bad part. Our fund balance as of June the 30th of 2017 was $3,870,557. Now, because of some changes that you're gonna see in a little further in, we're having to make a huge hit on our fund balance, over $1,000,001,170,012. And that will leave us a balance of, fund balance of $2,700,000. And as we've talked in the past, our threshold of being comfortable is $2 million. $2 million is enough to cover supplements and one month of operating expenses for the system. So basically, we have $700,545 after this budget year before we're at the critical point. Next slide. These are things that have had a major impact on our, our fund balance this year. Title II, those monies are monies that we had banked that we had not used in the past, and we've depleted that fund now. I mean, there'll still be Title II monies coming, but these were monies that were in excess prior years. Same with textbooks. We'll... Same with textbooks, we'll still be receiving textbook funding, but that's money that we had banked, that now we're pulling all of it out to help cover the, the fund balance break. And as you see, we label this as a county decrease of $150,000, and I'm, I'm sure you're aware where that, where we're, we're seeing that as, that's from the auditorium payment, because we're, we're still paying, but, and I understand you honored your agreement from the original. I'm, I'm not arguing that point, I'm just, just saying that that's where $150,000 has, has gone. Retirement, the big change in retirement is coming from the state, and I'm sure that, Mr. French, I'm sure that y'all are battling the same thing, that, that when we have a state allocated teacher position, or, or any other state allocated position, you know, those retirements pretty much are covered by the state. But when we have a position that we fund, then those, that retirement is, has, has to be paid out of our monies. And I was talking to, to Ms. Mahaffey this morning, trying to get a grasp on a few other little odds and ends, and, and she was telling me that 17 cents of out of every dollar that we spend on salaries goes to, goes towards, towards retirement. That's a pretty hefty chunk. Okay? And of course, health insurance costs have gone up, and, and we, of course, have to cover those employees that we do not receive state allocated monies for. Then the certified increase, when the state gave teachers and the certified employees, when they gave them raises, then a teacher doesn't know if we're paying their salary or if the state's paying their salary. And so, we, we have to cover those increases for the, the employees that we have not received state allocated monies for. And then we also received a substantial central office cut this year too, for a total of the $1,91,655. And another thing that I, I thought about today that served on the, on the school board with two, two board members, and I know Chairman Leo has been a school board member in the past also, and of course, Dr. Peel, knowing the, the system very well. Another thing you may not be aware of is that back years ago, not, not many years ago, we used to call what we, used to do what we called banking teacher monies. All right, you remember that, that term? And it was basically, the state paid teacher salaries, new, new hires at the state average. Okay? But now, and we could bank, if we hired a first-year teacher and paid first-year salary, then we could bank the difference between those two. And the difference in that has amounted to as much as $800,000 a year. And for at least three years, I know that we've not been able to do that. So that's well over $2 million in cuts from the state right there, just by not being able to bank that difference. Because now they're paid, a new hire is paid by first-year teacher salary. Okay? Next slide. To show that we've been good stewards of our money, this is just a, a simple breakdown of employees in, in the years where we've started having declining enrollment. And, and you'll notice that we've down almost 200 employees. And so, you know, we, we feel like we've about as lean as we can be. All right, next slide. This also shows, now, I don't want you to think that this means that we're necessarily having larger classroom sizes, but across, across the system, this shows also our students per employee, that we've gone in 2010 from 4.9 students per employee to 5.3. And as a board, we think we are at a critical point that, that if we go much leaner, then we are creating less of a learning atmosphere. And, and as you've seen in the past short while, our test scores, we're, we're doing very, very well in Alexander County. But we want to keep it that way. Next slide. The, this is just showing you what we've, our funding levels going back to 2006, and I'm sure you're aware of this. And I know from the years 2007 through the years 2013, we, we stayed at a, at a level playing field there. But at that point, we didn't need the money because we had the, the ARA monies coming in, in other words, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. We had those monies coming in, and we, we didn't need an increase. But if you look at the amount of increase we've had since 2007 to 2018, Milton, you'd be proud, I went through and did a reverse amortization today. And it's basically 2% each year. And I don't, I don't think that's out of reason by any means. And looking back, I really wish that we probably had, had the discussion at the time of doing basically a cost-of-living type increase per year, rather than having to come to you, you know, with this much need at one point. Next slide. Okay. So the purpose of tonight's presentation is very clear, it's to ask for, for your help and to make you aware of our financial situation. And I know we have some future meetings with Chair and Vice Chair, and, but I wanted it out in the open where we're at, and, and so we can try to move forward and, and keep school system running without having so many sleepless nights. Thank you.
All right. Good report, appreciate the information, and, you know, I think...
Any questions, or?
We're all willing to promote education that's on the board here, and several of us have served on the board, and Dr. Peel has also, you know, served as the Associate Superintendent. So, you know, kind of looking back, you can see, in just the past couple of years, we have increased what we've been funding, you know, to the schools. And I think we have a, a meeting that was, you know, scheduled for the 18th, and, you know, we'll dig in, you know, a little deeper and, you know, see what, you know, what can be done to, you know, resolve within what we can do. So, anybody?
I was gonna say, just Harry, I, I could talk to you, I think, Friday, and we missed each other on Wednesday, but I appreciate the format this is in, this is much easier to follow, and they got meeting and scheduled for the 18th with Ronnie and Dr. Peel and y'all's reps. And as I mentioned in that, to maybe get a trend analysis from 15 to, and I know you didn't have time to do that, so I apologize.
Well, we actually, we pretty much pulled that together, but we decided that we should not be making changes to what was there already submitted. So, but...
I think that'll be a value, at least for this group, to, on the income and the expense side, to see, you know, where your incomes change from what funding pool, what source, and then if you had expenses that were unfunded mandates, you know, I think you put a big asterix beside those.
Yeah, because we, we're, we're getting ready to face some other ones. If, if the state keeps their intention where they're at right now, if, that we're gonna have a reduction in class size for K3 with no further monies coming. And so, we could, we could, I think...
Potentially four and a half, five?
4.3, I think, is what.
Yeah.
Which, which has probably, what, $160,000 cost, probably, plus or minus?
Uh, well, when you put in...
Salary and benefits?
Salaries and benefits, and see, that's not gonna be funded by the state, so we're gonna have to cover all the benefits, all, all of that. So, so it, it's not, it's not real good for, for rural counties right now. And we're not the only one. I mean, I, I, I receive information from the School Board Association and hear about it every day from counties our size. Yeah.
But I, again, appreciate how this format is.
Thank you very much.
It's very brief but concise, and so thank you.
Believe me, that's the only way I would be able to present it.
And that's what we was looking for, is to, you know, get the points there, what we need to see, so. And just as you mentioned, I see a lot of people travel around a lot, about every county is experiencing, but if you're a larger county, they have more room to, you know, kind of absorb and do things. But, you know, I'll just say, speaking for myself, we're not gonna leave y'all hanging, you know, we're gonna...
We appreciate that.
See what we can do, and we'll address that at our meeting on the 18th.
We'd really like to teach some people in the General Assembly a few math lessons.
Well, I, I, I don't know if you remember, three years ago, when I did opening session and handed out some information from the General Assembly, and I guess I maybe stepped on some toes pretty hard at the time, because I've had a real hard time getting much conversation. It's just, it's, it's been a battle, been a battle. Anything else?
Is that it, guys?
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to item number four will be the broadband feasibility study for Alexander County, and Mr. Alan Fitzpatrick and Mr. Stephen Morris, you guys come up. Appreciate the coming tonight.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm Alan Fitzpatrick, I am the CEO of Open Broadband LLC. We support expansion of broadband throughout underserved markets throughout the Carolinas. So we're active in several counties in North Carolina, so we're very pleased to be picked in the RFP process to do a broadband assessment for Alexander County. We were very fortunate today that our CTO, Kent Windrick, could join us, so I may ask Kent to do a little show and tell later with some of the equipment.
All right.
But thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. So I wanted to give a, if you could flip the slide, thanks, Chuck, wanted to give an overview of the study, but I want to go through this fairly quickly to allow you time to ask questions, and I like to answer questions you might have. So this report that we presented summarizes a community workshop where we got people from the community to talk about their broadband needs, what areas might be short, what opportunities may exist, how they use broadband, and why they would need it. And I guess at this point, I should define broadband as being 25 megabits or faster speed. So there's a lot of people that have internet access, but it may not be broadband, it may not be 25 megabit. So when this report was commissioned, it was really focused on 25 megabit or more, because in today's society, with multiple people in the household, and you're watching videos, and you're trying to stream Netflix, and you're trying to download your ebook for school, or you're trying to do research, you really use a lot of bandwidth pretty quickly. And businesses are oftentimes moving to cloud platforms. So your server isn't necessarily down the hall anymore, you're working in the cloud, which requires a very strong internet connection. So when we talk about broadband, we are talking 25 megabit and above. So we held a community workshop to hear directly from the audience, we took a look at the current market, what you have available in Alexander County today, what the current capabilities were, and then at the end, we're recommending a strategy that you can use to further promote it. And to kind of cut to the chase, you have some good opportunities to do a lot with broadband. So that's the good news. This is a picture of the workshop that we held in November. We had about 25 people in attendance. It varied from corporate people, we had some Snyder Mills representatives there, to entrepreneurs, people that were working from home, people from community college, people from the county. So it was a good cross-mix of people. So what did we learn at the workshop? Well, it was the following. Everyone really believed that broadband was important for economic development, that unless we had wider broadband across the county, it was gonna kind of limit how the, how the economy was gonna grow. It certainly would support existing businesses better if they had better broadband options. We heard that directly from the business people that were in attendance. And particularly, the focus on cloud. So as businesses are having to transmit their data back and forth to the cloud, that internet connection just is more and more critical. New businesses require broadband as well. So there's a lot of people now that are working from home. They could be consultants, they could be makers, they could be software developers. But you can't work effectively if you don't have a good internet connection. And there were several people in the workshop that complained about not having a good connection. There's certainly an opportunity for entrepreneurship. So you can basically create a company from anywhere. You can work for a company in California, sitting here in Alexander County. You know, we have people today that might drive to Lenore and work for Google data centers, or they drive to Morrisville and work for Lowe's, but when they get back home, they don't necessarily have the same speeds that they would have at the office. But there's no reason why that can't be fixed. Employee availability, attracting people to the county to work locally, and then also keeping people here that are commuting to other counties. You don't want those people moving, you know, to Hickory, you want them staying in Alexander County. So we heard a lot about that. And education came up as well. There's a term called the homework gap, which is when kids are expected to do their homework online, but yet they may not have broadband access at the home. So what do they do? They may go to the library, they may go to McDonald's and do homework, which is kind of sad, but that's what happens. So education came up from, from that aspect, as well as, you know, what is the impact of people's lives if they're online versus not being online? The access to opportunities is so much better if you have broadband connection. So those were the outcomes of the workshops, everybody was pretty, pretty interested in, in improving things. So we did an assessment of what was available. So the good news is, there are a lot of assets that are available in the county. So we started with fiber, so you see some pictures and screenshots of fiber poles and, and some apps. So there's a lot of assets here that can be leveraged. So getting to the next page. So we kind of covered four areas when we looked at what was available. Broadband availability in general, customer satisfaction, whether or not they were happy with it, what infrastructure was available to expand beyond what you have, and then what are some options to bringing broadband to some of the unserved or underserved corners of the county. Particularly, the corners of the county tend to not be as well-covered as, say, Taylor's So the key findings, so you're, the broadband provider that has the best coverage is spectrum. So if you have access to cable, you're in the best shape in Alexander County for having good broadband speeds. But spectrum doesn't cover everybody. There are communities that actually don't have cable, so you can't access it. Some businesses that have cable complain about consistent speeds, we heard about that in the workshop. And one limitation of cable is it's not symmetric, which means your download speed is faster than your upload speed. If any of you have cable, you're probably aware of that. In general, that may not sound like an issue, but for the businesses that are relying on cloud, they have to upload their data just as much as they're downloading data. So that upload speed becomes pretty critical. So that's a limitation of, of spectrum. There are significant middle-mile fiber networks. There's fiber from Spectrum, Spirit, AT&amp;T, that go right through the county. They go along 16, they go along 64, it's available, and it can be used. I'll give you some recommendations here in a few minutes. Copper providers are the traditional telephone companies. So you have AT&amp;T and CenturyLink, but copper doesn't provide the higher speeds of data. So technically, they don't provide broadband. You can get DSL service, where some members here may, may have DSL, which was great back in the day when you went from dial-up to DSL, you know, that was fantastic. But in today's world, if you have a five-megabit DSL connection at the house, you really can't, you know, do all the things online that people are doing today, it's just not fast enough. Being where you're located, there are some assets that provide good views into the county, particularly with the mountains on the southwest and the northeast side. There are several ridge lines, you have a lot of towers in the county, cell towers, water tanks, that could be used for something called fixed wireless internet that I'll expand upon in just a few minutes. But those assets are very important, those can be used to expand broadband, and you're fortunate that you have these types of assets in the county. We looked at affordability. Each of the providers that is currently in the market has a reduced cost program. It may not be well-known, I think one of the things is better promotion of the lower-cost plans would be a good thing to do. Historically, the providers don't like to promote their low-cost plans, so they may need a little encouragement. And there are the existing fiber routes that would allow broadband to be extended further into the corners. So those were the key findings. We were asked to take a look at public-private partnership options. There is something some of you may know, House Bill 129, which basically prohibits municipalities and counties from offering... and counties from offering service directly to residents. Some locations have been grandfathered, so you have like Salisbury and Wilson, North Carolina, that provide service to residents. But if you weren't grandfathered before HB 129, you can't suddenly decide, well, we're going to fix this and we're going to provide our own internet service. So you have to work with a private company. So as a county, you can't do it yourself. But fortunately, there are some providers that are interested. So your IT department held a service provider meeting down in, at the very bottom of the slide, November 16th, and four service providers attended. The incumbents didn't show up, but four new service providers said, hey, this sounds interesting, we'd like to hear more. So the county can help, and you'll see this a little bit further in my recommendations, but the county can make it easier for some of these new providers by working with them on a partnership level to, you know, lease existing capacity, allow access to some water tanks, towers, and just kind of help, yeah.
Who showed up?
It was NC Wireless, Wilks, Open Broadband, were a service provider as well. And Kent, you have the fourth one, or Greg, do you remember?
River Street Networks, Skyline, SkyBass, NC Wireless, and Open Broadband.
Who didn't show up?
I think there were twelve.
Spectrum, Charter.
Yeah, the incumbents didn't show, AT&amp;T didn't show, Spectrum didn't show. I think the invite went out to maybe about eight more providers, but I don't think they arrived either. But there was some interest, including us, so later on, we'll present a proposal to help. So when you look at trying to expand broadband, there's really two technologies that are going to work in this environment. One is something called fixed wireless, and the other is fiber optics. Both of these can be used to provide speeds of 25 megabit up to gigabit speed. For fixed wireless, just to define it a little bit more, fixed wireless means you're doing wireless directly to a home. So you put a small dish on a rooftop, similar to a DirecTV, but smaller, and you're beaming high-speed wireless directly to the house. So Kent has a couple of examples.
These are examples of what would be on top of the house.
So they're pretty small, right? And ethernet cable basically run from this antenna into the house to a small router. So similar to the way a DirecTV dish would come into a set-top box. So that particular technology, the investment per user is $250 or less for those antennas. So it's pretty cost-effective to be able to pinpoint users and actually provide them very high-speed internet. You generally put your main antennas on a tower. It could be a radio tower, it could be a water tank, some tall structure, and then you're beaming to those types of antennas at the end-user premise. The towers can cost up to about $10,000 to install all the gear and put everything in place. But with this sort of economic model, the ISP can usually get a cost recovery within a year. Just if you're charging $30 or $40 per month for the user, you can get your money back on the gear. Fiber is a wonderful technology, I'm a big fan of fiber. You have that in Wilks County, you have it in Salisbury, but it's very expensive. So if you look at the cost of deploying fiber, it's going to be between $36,000 and $65,000 per mile. And, yes.
Is that, is that a buried cable, or is that hanging on the telephone poles?
That range covers both.
Okay.
So the aerial is the lower part of that, so the $35,000 would be aerial. Buried, depending on if you run into granite and how many rocks, it could be $65,000 a mile.
Okay.
A challenge for that technology too is, you have to pass every home, because you're just going right, you know, physically in the line down the street. The advantage of the fixed wireless is you can skip people. You can just go directly to the customer that wants it, put up one of these antennas, and then you could just, you know, hit them directly. So you don't have to pass people that aren't customers. And fiber doesn't have that luxury. You have to run fiber kind of all the way down the street. So fiber basically has unlimited capacity. You'll get all the capacity you ever dreamed of with a fiber network. It's just very costly. For a private company to do it, it would be 10 to 20-year payback. And you're looking at, you know, 10 to 20 million dollars to try to put this out through the county. It would be wonderful to have, and if you could get grant money to do that, that would be terrific. If you don't have grant money to do it, you tend to look at some more cost-effective solutions. So if you look at the next page, we happen to be fans of fixed wireless, just because we think economically it makes the most sense, particularly in more rural communities. The picture that you see on the left is from an installation in Belmont, which is in Gaston County. You see a couple of the antennas there, slightly different than the ones that Kent was showing. But these will provide speeds of 25 megabit to 100 megabit service, which would be a lot faster than what most residents have here today. It's obviously ideal for streaming video, for school assignments, downloading books, cloud applications for businesses, all those things you'd like to do.
What's the range on one of those?
You can go about five miles with one of those small dishes.
And will have the capacity to feed how many of those?
Well, it, an instance like you see up here, that taller, thin antenna would cover about five miles, it can serve about 40 different customers off of one antenna. They're directional, so you put antennas around and cover that 360-degree pattern. So what we do is, we engineer where, we create something called micro pops. Pop stands for point of presence, so that you have like antennas in neighborhoods that it covers that neighborhood. So you start out in the high spot and move down into a lower spot into a neighborhood and have a micro pop down in that neighborhood. But you have micro pops all over the place so that there's enough bandwidth to go to everybody in the neighborhood. Does that answer your question?
And about a five-mile range?
We like to go a little short, it does do five miles, we can easily do five miles. Our point-to-point, in other words, water tower to water tower, or radio tower, can go 20 miles plus. But we try to keep our range around five miles or less to keep our bandwidth strong.
That's a bunch of antennas.
Yes.
But one thing that helps with the fixed wireless approach is, you don't have to automatically assume 100% of the people are going to be subscribers. You can just put in the antennas to hit the people that sign up for service. So it tends to make it more attractive for a fixed wireless ISP to justify it. Three of the four companies Greg mentioned that went to the service provider meeting were fixed wireless. So our recommended strategy, in looking at the landscape of what you need and what you have, you have some wonderful assets. We believe the first thing you should do is try to attract competitor in. Because if you don't, you're going to keep getting what you're getting, which people have said is not acceptable. If you're in Taylorsville and you're on cable, you might be happy. If you're out in the county somewhere and you're trying to just get DSL service and you can't get it, and you're frustrated, that's what we heard at the workshop. So until you get somebody in that's going to like kick the tail a little bit of the incumbents, I don't see them making a big change. So I would, you know, we would recommend that you attract a competitive ISP, and how do you do that? One way is to help them by providing access to some of the towers, some of the vertical infrastructure that you already have, that would be useful and valuable to a fixed wireless company. The second thing is to seed the competitive effort a bit. So just like using kindling when you're starting a fire, if you could use the county's internet contract and basically offer that up to the new ISP that comes in, then they're assured that they're going to get some revenue. I don't know how much the county spends on internet. But it would be something that would attract them to say, okay, we're going to start off with a little bit of money when we go and target the residential users. I wouldn't necessarily just give up that contract just for the heck of it. I would hold that new ISP accountable for delivering some things, and basically the three things I have below. If you're going to go through the effort at partnering with a new ISP, they should cover some of your gaps, provide service in areas that are underserved, and provide high speeds. 100 megabit speed, that's four times the 25 megabit that we were talking about. And make it affordable. So if you're going to go through this effort and partner with somebody, make sure that they're going to deliver service for $30 or $40, something that a lot of people can afford. Maybe not everybody, but a lot of people can afford that. Grant funding. There have been counties in the state that have been successful at getting grants for broadband. Gaston County was one of them. They were able to get a million-dollar grant to basically support both broadband growth and entrepreneurship center. Golden Leaf has some funds for that. It's not easy, but you could go after that. And I would recommend that, particularly if you want to go after a fiber solution, that you explore some of the grants, because you're probably not going to have that in your budget. Fourth strategy we'd recommend is to have an innovation center, a place in the county that supports local entrepreneurship and small businesses. It doesn't have to be some brand-new building, it could be an existing building that's vacant, it could be a rum in the community college, it could be just a place where entrepreneurs could get together and have high-speed internet there, and let people come in and work. Because you never know kind of who's out there in the county that's wanting to create this new company, and they just need a place to do it. If you do form an innovation center, one of the tools I've seen work effectively is to offer a gigabit speed. Gigabit is a fancy name for 1,000 megabits per second, really fast internet. If you have an innovation center like that, there's really no limitation to what they Recommended strategy number five is, fund a pilot program. This doesn't have to be expensive, we'd recommend something less than $50,000, to offer a new ISP to come in and provide this symmetric, high-speed internet, and hold them accountable to covering certain areas where there are gaps in coverage, where you need the service. And by having a pilot program, having this new ISP come in, it's not going to take the incumbents very long to recognize this. You're going to see AT&amp;T and Comcast go, I'm sorry, Charter, what's going on here? Who is this new provider? They're offering services, they're taking away some of our business, maybe we need to get our act together, maybe we need to provide better service. Which kind of leads me to the sixth point, is even though the incumbent ISPs haven't necessarily, you know, stepped up to improve things, it doesn't hurt to go back to them again, just explain where the county is, what the residents in the county are asking for, say, isn't there anything you can do to help our constituents? You know, here are areas that are just not being well-served. Take that back, give us a proposal to go cover it. So those are the six things we believe you can do that will have a direct impact on improving broadband. And with that, I'll open it up to other questions.
I want to ask a question of the county manager. When's the last time we actually had a conversation with Charter or Spectrum now? Because they pretty much have just thumbed their noses at us over the years.
Long time.
Yeah, so, been a while. You were speaking of gaps in coverage. The system, like where I live, I have Charter, I have, you know, great speed, have no problem with it. But would, would the fixed wireless be deployed in any of those areas where there might be some overlap between, you know, Charter and whatever company decides to come in, the new ISP?
It could be. Fixed wireless could essentially be deployed anywhere.
Right.
However, from a benefit to the county, you may require that they focus a little bit more on non-cable areas than cable areas, just because if they cover cable areas, they're basically a swap-out of one technology for another.
Right.
But the same group of people still has access. So if you ask, say, a fixed wireless provider to go into the, you know, the northeast corner of the county, or the southeast corner, or the northwest corner, and hit these underserved people, that all they have is DSL at that. And sometimes you can't even get DSL, you're on a waiting list to try to get AT&amp;T to give you DSL speed. I think if you ask the new provider to deliberately go after the non-cable markets, that would be a good thing. We were a little surprised that there were a couple of fairly new communities close to Taylorsville that weren't covered by cable. Kent, you can help me out, those two neighborhoods.
I think it was in Cornerstone?
Cornerstone and, what was the first one?
Fairway Oaks.
Fairway Oaks. Not that far out of town, but don't have cable. So that might be an area where it would be attractive to us to go in and provide fixed wireless to people in those communities that just don't have an option.
I'm a builder and developed some smaller subdivisions too, and I can tell you that Charter has no interest in, you know, new development. So I, you know, I've tried to get them to come into different places that I've done, and they won't even return your phone calls. So they have no interest in that. They want a lot of people, you know, per mile, and that's where they want to deploy their assets at.
And part of that, I'm sure, is being driven by that financial model. The numbers I threw up there for fiber actually apply as well to COAX. Because the cost of deploying that fiber isn't so much the fiber itself, it's all the labor and the pole attachments and digging, whether it's, you know, buried or aerial. And that's all the same whether it's COAX or fiber. So from their perspective, they're probably just doing the math and saying it doesn't make sense, but that doesn't help your residents. Where a fixed wireless could go in with much more cost-effective model, and be profitable for them, and provide this resident something they need. Yes?
And number two, strategy number two, you talked about seeding the competitive effort and having them cover the gaps, but then we come back in number five. So number two or number five, I guess, would be, if we got someone to do that in number two, cover the gaps, and it wouldn't be something we'd necessarily have to do again, and funding a pilot program to hit the underserved areas, is that, am I understanding you correctly there?
Yes, and they could actually be combined. You could, you could say, let's do a pilot program with one of the new entrants, and say, well, in order to do the pilot program, you have to do these three things.
Gotcha.
I'll mention one other thing. I'm the longest-serving member on the board, and one of the things that we did, and I don't remember what year this was, Mr. French, but we upgraded the registered deeds software. And I was the one that brought that, you know, to everybody's attention, and we need to change this because the software there was not very user-friendly. And so, you know, that's one area, we wanted to do that in order to make it easier for real estate brokers, appraisers, people who deal in real estate, attorneys, to be able to use that software. But again, a lot of these people are working from home, and if you can't access it or use it, then it's really not done any good. So that's part of the reason that we're looking at this. We actually had an appraiser that was unable to do his job from his home, and, you know, he's just having a terrible time about it. Because if you're in business today, you have to have broadband access.
You actually raised a good point, it's a benefit not just to the business, but you're expecting your customers to also be online, because you want to communicate with them that way.
Exactly.
And if they're not, then it is, you suffer.
One comment, one comment I would make, I think we all understand there's a need for expanded broadband service in Alexander County. If anybody wants to verify it for themselves, drive by the Taylorsville Library or the Bethlehem Library after closing. The Taylorsville Library, very often, the parking lot is full, and it's people on their cellphones, or tablets, or whatnot, using the Wi-Fi signal that's coming out of the And Bethlehem Library, my office is right beside it, and it's not as, you know, not as frequent, but same situation. I mean, there are people that drive, now whether they're, you know, whether they're just playing games, or getting on Facebook, or whatever, you know, that's not, you know, that's not for us to determine or belittle. So there's, and I, and the other thing I would say, I live in a, I live in a neighborhood, it's been, neighborhood I live in was built in, in the late, you know, developed late 70s, 80s. And we have CenturyLink, yeah, and we have phone as well as cable access, but like, but when we first moved there, we got everything through the phone company. we first moved there, we got everything through the phone company. And, you know, the phone company offered, I don't know, at that time, you know, 25 meg or 45 meg, I don't know, 50 meg. And the fastest we could was three because we were at the end of the line. And I'm like, okay, why am I, you know, and I was paying the same as if I was getting 40, and I was getting three. And, I mean, and that was very noticeable. And I know telephone, at least the telephone systems especially, how long was that wire been in the ground? How long, you know, how old are those, some of those components? And...
Yeah, the copper technology just isn't going to give you the speeds you need to go forward. It's going to have to be something like a fixed wireless or a fiber or a coax to give you the speeds.
I was at a meeting in my former career with one of our incumbents one time on infrastructure issues, and one of their engineers told me a break, well, we have this whole county covered in internet. I said, oh, really? He said, oh, yeah, or we have it in the plan. I said, you do? He said, yeah, we do. He said, we got a three-month plan, a six-month plan, and a nine-month plan. I said, great! I was pretty excited because I live in a pretty rural area. I said, well, tell me where my house is at. He said, well, give me your address. And I told him, and he said, not in the three-month, it's not in the six-month. I don't see it in the nine-month either. I said, so it's not going to happen? He said, doesn't look like it.
Yeah, for a point.
So there's a lot of doesn't look like it's out there right now that are very underserved, that are dealing with inadequate cellular at a large premium that we're, that's being eaten up like crazy. And, you know, I can speak for what we do and know that we're one of thousands of people in the county that's grossly underserved in internet.
Yeah, your experience isn't that unusual across the country, unfortunately. Don't feel like, well gee, Alexander County is the only place in the world where this happens. There was a study by the FCC, the last date was in 2015, so it's only a couple of years old, but 30% of the census tracts in the country, 30%, don't have access to anyone that provides 25 meg. Another 48% had access to one. And I would put you in that category, and the one is cable. So, across the whole country, only 78% of the country only has access to zero or one provider. So you're not alone in this, unfortunately. But I believe the only thing that's going to fix it is to have more competition. When you have more competition, consumers win because there's more choice, and it forces the providers to do a better job and to lower their prices and to cover areas that people are willing to pay. I'm sure there's locations where people would be happy to spend 30 or 40 dollars a month on internet if somebody would give it to them. You just need to encourage somebody to give it to them. So hopefully some of these recommendations will be ones that the county is able to implement and get a new provider in.
Okay, so, from a technical standpoint here, you've got antennas, and they're lined up in a circular area, you're beaming out in a 360-degree area. So, when that signal comes back to that receiver, your receiver, they're uploading something, say, then where does it go from there? Because you have to have fiber.
Yes, you do.
Okay. So how are you getting that from a mountaintop to a fiber cable?
And that's where you're very fortunate as a county to have fiber in the county. So we talked earlier about how AT&amp;T and Spectrum and Spirit have fiber here. What we do as a company is we'll lease fiber from our data center directly to a tower. It goes up the tower leg to the antennas. So all that internet traffic when it hits the antenna then gets carried out on fiber. So it's kind of the best-kept secret of wireless is all that traffic eventually hits fiber anyway. You want to add anything to that, or?
Also, we can take fiber.
Would you come up, sir? Would you mind just to come up there? That way everybody can hear. Thank you.
So we can also take fiber from any location and then use a dish like this. This dish, we just deployed this in Belmont. This is capable of 2.5 gigabits, which is two-and-a-half times faster than Google Fiber. So we can take this and deploy this point-to-point. So if we can't get a fiber to a specific tower, we can use something like this to get to a tower and provide exceedingly high bandwidth utilizing a little dish like this.
So you'll take a bunch of signals, condense them down, hit that, then shoot that to another point where you can connect to fiber.
It's kind of spoken wheel.
Right.
So we like to find a central location. The hill you have here in town is a great location with towers. You can see practically the whole county from there, or at least they can see the other high points within the county. So we bring up, we know there's fiber up there already, so you guys are pretty well set. We start deploying out, hub and spoke, or hub and spoke out to the periphery of the county, and then let's say we have a water tower or a cell tower, and that can then go down into, we mentioned those micro pops before, that can go down into those micro pops into the neighborhoods. So it just keeps kind of spreading out.
Okay. All right. Another technical question here. There's a fiber backbone that runs from north, I mean, from east to west across North Carolina. Does that cut through Alexander County?
That's MCNC.
Yeah, okay. It does cut through this, okay.
It does.
Yeah, you have some wonderful fiber assets. The fiber today cuts through the county but doesn't go to the house.
Right.
Well, and just because a fiber goes in your neighborhood, for example, we've, I hear a lot of people say, well, there's a fiber right out in my front yard. Well, that doesn't mean you can have access to it. You can't just go there and cut the fiber and start peeling it off to homes. You have to have a location where it terminates. So just because there's a fiber in your front yard doesn't mean you can have access to it.
Okay.
But it's a good thing you have fiber. If fiber wasn't available at all, you'd be hurting. Because even the fixed wireless has to hit fiber at some point, and if you didn't have fiber in the county, you'd be hard up. But the good news is you do have fiber. It's in great locations. You have towers. You can implement this type of technology fairly cost-effectively and attract an ISP that can actually make some money at it and provide affordable service to residents that Other questions?
Need a pilot?
I'd say, well, I feel like I've learned enough to start an ISP and, you know, start beaming internet from here to there, everywhere.
There's been a lot of people, spent a lot of time and energy on this, and this group and our broadband committee and a lot of people out there in the public that, you know, have spent a lot of time getting this together. And, you know, there's been people behind us driving us saying, you know, we can't, we can't properly do our jobs and, because we don't have access to broadband. So, that's where this came from.
Right, and thanks to Mr. French and Greg Clark, who was very instrumental in this, and the whole broadband committee, which we got a chance to meet several members. Very effective.
I personally think this is important as water and sewer, and maybe more so, and not only for economic development, but also quality of life. I couldn't imagine having a child in school and needing to do a homework assignment and driving up to the library and parking out there for an hour.
No offense to the library, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's nice, it's there.
But that's not what the library is for. Or, excuse me, that's not what it's intended to tend to be.
And, you know, I take it for granted, I live in town and I have good service, but, you know, I have an employee today that just made a comment where we weren't talking about this, it said, and they live up Highway 16, right across from Shirley School, which is five miles from here, maybe, at the most, and have horrible service. It's expensive. I think they use a hotspot through Verizon. And, you know, I guess that's repeated over and over in our county. So to me, this is as important as the water and sewer projects we're doing, maybe more so.
Yeah.
It's interesting you mentioned the water and the utility of broadband like this. I used to be the director of the Salisbury Fiber Optic Network called Fibrant, and we would find that people would rather have their water cut off than their internet.
Right.
Had that played over and over again. Kind of shocked me.
Yeah, I could go days without bathing, but I don't know about, you know...
Not around meeting time, anyway.
Well, the report in the study that we did is...
If we can't get Amazon.
The report in the study that we did is the property of the county. It was a work-for-hire that we did. We tried to be completely neutral as we could. We fully anticipate that you'll share this with the incumbents and with other competitive providers, and that's certainly yours to do. On the operating side of our business, we are an ISP as well, so we were part of the provider meeting that was held, and we will be submitting a proposal. We believe in eating our own dog food, so if I recommended it to you, that's something we're going to put our money where our mouth is, and you're going to see a proposal from us to kind of do this. And I'm sure you'll get proposals from others as well. But just to commit to you that we think there's a good opportunity here, we think the need is here, it can be done, it can be done profitably, and everybody wins. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Very much.
Thank you for that, and appreciate the time everybody spent. Thanks to everyone who worked on this, and we had a couple commissioners that were on that too, and I appreciate the work everybody's done, and we'll be looking for your proposal.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Moving on to item number five, proclamation in support of HB 551, SB 595, Marcy's Law. I'll read that proclamation. It says, proclamation in support of HB 551, SB 595, Marcy's Law. Whereas Marcy's Law for North Carolina, an advocacy organization statewide or dedicated to guaranteeing victims' rights and providing a voice, and whereas Marcy's Law for North Carolina supporters agree that victims should always be treated with fairness and respect throughout the criminal justice process, protected from the defendant, reasonably heard at public proceedings regarding their case, and given a voice through the process of the case. And whereas, per Federal Bureau of Investigation's most recent Crime in United States report in 2013, a total of 33,700 North Carolinians were victim of violent index crimes, including murder, rape, robbery, aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, motor vehicle theft, and arson. And whereas Marcy's Law for North Carolina will ensure that victims receive the same rights that are afforded to criminals and have rights to notification of release, hearings, appropriate restitution, and the right to speak during criminal proceedings. And whereas victim rights is a nonpartisan, nonpolitical issue, and Marcy's Law is a common-sense approach to ensuring the rights of crime victims. Now therefore be it resolved that Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim support of HB 551, SB 596, Marcy's Law, and encourages all citizens to join in the commitment to protect the rights of North Carolina crime victims. Adopted this day, this eighth day of January 2018. I make that in the form of a motion, and I entertain a second.
Second?
I'm in motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, all in support of this law, raise your right hand. Thanks. Unanimous approval. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Moving on to item number six, recognize county manager Rick French for our county sales tax revenue for 2017, 2018 budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets you have county sales tax revenue for current fiscal year. So far this year, we have, from regular sales tax, we've collected $1,507,085, which is almost 33% of the budget year, which is right on target. Our budget for regular county sales tax was $4,556,000, and that number is five, almost five-and-a-half percent increase over this time last year. Under the new sales tax, we've collected $482,976.60, which is 34.52% of the budget, and the budget year is 33.3, so we're just a little bit ahead of that. And we budgeted $1,399,000. We are 7.16% ahead of the same time last year, so that's a good start.
All right. Thank you for that report. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to number seven. Recognize Mr. Rick French, county manager, again, for board appointments and reapportments and the library board of trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Recommendation is to appoint Betty Long and Ginny Masters for three years.
You've heard the recommendation, make a motion to accept. I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
As always, thank you to those people that are willing to serve and help the community.
Yes, that's right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight is budget ordinance amendments, number 30 and 31. Recognize county manager, Mr. Rick French, once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget amendment number 30 is to budget for the estimated expenses and revenues for the April 2018 Rocky Fest event at Rocky Face Park, and that's $11,500. That's all paid with business and industrial funds, donations for the park, for the festival. And then we have budget amendment number 31, which is to budget for fiscal year 2018 payment to Alexander County schools to help cover the costs of the 21st Century Program at Taylorsville Elementary School for the 2017, 2018 budget year, and that's $40,000.
All right. Jim, you've heard the request, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we accept budget ordinance number 30 and 31 as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or questions?
That was two and a half.
Just in the, in 31, that's the 40,000 from our contingency that we...
That's correct.
...planned earlier, correct?
Yes. That will be going to the school system, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that's the fun, half of the cost, didn't we just split that cost in my opinion?
Yeah.
Otherwise, that program would have been, had the chance.
Yeah, it would have been, yeah, would have been done. And as Mr. French stated, you know, item number 30, that's not any county monies, that's all money from businesses and donations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions?
Since there are school people here, we thought we'd just be quiet for a little bit before anybody made the motion, just because it'd be fun.
Got to have a little fun, yeah. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And number nine, once again, our county manager report, recognize Mr. Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple things to mention. We did hold a public meeting on January the 4th from 3:00 to 6:00 at the Bethlehem Branch Library to review the draft of the Bethlehem Sewer Plan. Dan Shapeldine, who's the engineer on the project, was in attendance along with several of the commissioners to answer questions and explain the plan. We had a number of residents, we had about 20 residents, I believe, sign in that day. Also, just to make the public aware, the county staff will be working to, in meeting on January 24th to kick off the 2018, 2019 budget process. I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, and I do have some things for closed session.
All right. Any questions from anyone? If not, I know I kind of overlooked that myself, sorry about that. For the commissioner's report, does any commissioner have anything to mention?
I was going to mention the sewer, the sewer plant, or the sewer, proposed sewer expansions in Bethlehem. I was not able to get to the meeting before 6:00. I had a lot of stuff going on, but I, being in the business community in Bethlehem... I had a lot of stuff going on, but I, being in the business community in Bethlehem, I have heard from, and asked a couple people that I know went by, you know, what they thought, and/or, like I say, they've said something to me, and I have not heard any negative about the proposed sewer expansion whatsoever. We have, I have had a couple individuals ask about, will it be coming, you know, will it be coming to my house? And, once I explained that, that the, the no-interest and the low-interest money that we are, that we are looking to get to do these expansions are earmarked for economic, you know, economic, expansion for economic development, as well as upgrades to existing, you know, they just say, oh, okay. And so I think it's, overall, it's being received very positively.
If there's no one else with a commissioner report, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I entertain a motion and a second to approve our consent agenda. I think everyone's had time to look at it.
Somebody.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Double second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And before we do adjourn, just since the school systems are here, Commissioner Lael and myself plan to attend some school this week in Raleigh, for some training there. Probably will recruit our county manager to go along with us, so it'll be a day event on Friday. And coming back to our approval, we need to go into closed session. This will adjourn as far as the public meeting for now, we'll go into closed session in reference to NCGS 143, 318.11, for economic development, contractual, and personnel. And we will reconvene only for the purpose of adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, stand, and we'll be ready for closed session.